Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. It is April 2nd, 6:30. This is the time and place for our committee meeting. The Northern Lebanon School District Board of Directors is meeting as a committee of the whole, and I do this, do call this committee meeting to order. First item on the agenda for this evening is presentations. Dr. Messinger.
Yeah, we're gonna get right into it. We're gonna start with, Leanne's gonna give some information on the budget, and then we'll talk about next steps. So we'll start with that.
Just give me a second for my slides to come up.
Yeah, and I actually have the first slide. You know how they have on those TV shows, a lot of times between seasons, they go back and they recap previous conversations? So I started with that previously on NL budgets. Just some things to get your brain going, going into Leanne's presentation. One, in the 10-year projection that she's been giving since, oh, I don't know, it's been three, four years since you've been doing that. We talked about if all the construction projects come to fruition, that the next three years would be our toughest because of the bond payments that are going on. So just a reminder of that. Secondly, we knew that we would have to use some of the fund balance over the next few years, and the monies we have coming in from the building sales to balance the budget because of those, primarily because of those bond payments. So you'll see that reflected. And then finally, I think the other thing to always be cognizant of is just the long-term impact of when you look at raising money now versus waiting, how that impacts. So that 10-year projection and Excel spreadsheet that she's sent out before, but she's gonna send out again for you to play with. When you start, and we have an example in the slides, but when you start plugging in the numbers, you can, you can see what, what keeps us in a good place fund balance-wise, and where we start to get into trouble if we, if we go different routes. So having set the table for you, take it away.
Thank you. And before I dive into mine, I'll let you know, like Gary said, I'll be sending out the 10-year forecast for you guys to put numbers in and see, updated with all the most recent things that we have compiled together for the budget numbers. So it'll be updated with those. And also, we'll be working on the budget synopsis. I plan to get that out to you in the next day or two. And then this, finally, this budget presentation will, is going to be in board docs if it's not already for you to access. All right, and then jumping right into our budget timeline, especially since we have some new folks with us. So at the May meetings, we adopt a proposed final budget, and then it becomes available for public inspection. Basically, it's posted on the website for anyone to view it. And then in June, we review those numbers again, and we adopt the final budget. And at that time, we also approve the homestead and farmstead exclusions. We get the amounts from the state before that, so we approve those, that we will receive those funds from the state and give them right back to our taxpayers via the Homestead and Farmstead Relief Act. And then, this is my job, but the final budget is due to PDE within 15 days of the budget adoption. And the absolute latest that we can submit it as a school district is July 15th. So this slide probably looks familiar to those of you who are just in my office for your financial orientation, which was our new board members. I just wanted to review this with everybody. It is the Northern London School District funds and point out, because we talk a lot and we, we use this similar words, and I just want to make sure we have no confusion here. So at Northern London School District, we have the funds listed below. The first one being the general fund. And within that general fund, which covers the operations of the school district day-to-day, this is where we pay all of our bills out of and keeps us running, all of our revenues pretty much coming into here. And within that, we have our ending fund balance. And we have the committed ending fund balance, which is the, we commonly refer to as the healthcare fund. However, that's considered committed ending fund balance. And then we have something called assigned fund balance, and that's our capital projects. We have that all marked off for capital projects. So that's assigned capital projects, ending fund balance. And then we also just have the unassigned, which is basically when we say our ending fund balance. So those three things all lie within the general fund. And basically, the capital projects in this instance will come out to cover things that aren't construction-related or improvements that we're doing that aren't in the bond money. Then we move on to our food service fund, which is the operation of our cafeterias. And then this is where I wanted to make sure we had the distinction. We are currently, we have an active capital projects fund because we're doing construction. That is where the bond money goes. We need to keep our bond money separate from our operational money, and that isn't our capital projects fund. But do remember that we have the ending fund balance, which we do have earmarked for capital projects that come up for us.
And let me just clarify the difference there. First of all, you cannot have, what's the percentage for general, your general fund, it's unassigned or uncommitted?
Right, 8%.
8%. So you cannot have more than 8% and unassigned or uncommitted. When we started the capital project and we, and we committed funds to that, that is more along the lines of, we'll use the old high school before we, you know, renovate, air conditioning system breaks, we need $150,000. Instead of trying to pull it out of the budget, we had money designed specifically for capital projects. We've been trying to build that up each year. We were trying to put a little more in there. Things that are good usages of that, in another six, seven years, we'll have to refurbish the track. If you remember, we just did that not too long ago. It was in really, really bad shape, past, past its prime, and, and that cost us more money. Now we're in a situation, we're trying to keep up with it more. So it'll be less money, but still not something you, you wanna try to find in your budget in terms of, you know, $600,000, if, you know, if that's what the cost is at that point. So that's what that was, that's what that was designed for, and we've been adding to it over the past couple of years.
Thank you. And then finally, real quick, our debt service fund. Basically, that is just the flow-through in of money to pay our bond payments out of our general fund. It's just for tracking those purposes. And there's agency funds, which are basically student activity funds, like student council is an example, which basically, we are fiduciary responsible for those, but that is not our school district's money, and we cannot access that money to pay our operating expenses. That is strictly for the students. And then this is the PDE budget process. So when you, when you get the, if you ever look over the big, long budget forms that we put out there, and what you're actually approving in May and June, this is the process that is used. So you start with the prior year's ending fund balance. Typically, we take the ending fund balance plus what we have budgeted for this year. So 23, 24 budget plus the current ending fund balance. And what you do is, so you start with that, you add in any estimated revenues that we have, and then that's what shows as your available funds to be used for the year. So your ending fund balance plus the revenues you're expecting to receive in your budget equals your available funds. Then you subtract out your expenditures, and then that moves you up to what your ending fund balance is. And in order for this to be a good budget to PDE, that has to be greater than zero. And then you basically start it over. It's like the vicious circle of my life. So it's enjoyable for me, however. All right. I wanted to review the ending fund balance, where we are all at, bring us all up to speed, since I just said that was the top circle. So ending fund balance for 2023, you may recall from our auditors, we're at about 6.1 million. And right there is the committed, assigned, and unassigned amounts that we just reviewed what they are. And then we also wanted to, I wanted to make sure that you understood that this amount will be increasing because in 23, 24, we already settled on two of our buildings, and we have two more coming up. So we will be having about $8 million in there, and we'll be having discussions at some point before the end of 23, 24, in which one of these categories we would like to move that building sale money. And remember, we will probably be needing that for a large payment that we aren't able to borrow to finish the high school renovation project, approximately 6 million as of now, that we will need to cover. So we will be using that money. We have it earmarked. So probably makes most sense to put into capital projects to finish up the high school renovation project. I'm sure this slide looks familiar to some of you because we show it every year. This is our current 23, 24 tax millage at 16.29. And then PDE gives us our adjusted index, and with that, we are at 6.5. You can see where we compare that with everyone else in the county. And a 6.5% increase for Northern Lebanon, if we do all of that, would be 17.34 millage. And I just wanted to point out, Act 1 of 2006 is what limits the school district's increase of annual real estate tax. So in 2006, they decided that we cannot increase to just whatever we need to cover. You know, any expenses that we want to come up with, they give you these set amounts, and you must increase taxes within their limits.
Just a heads up that we have a general idea where other school districts in the county are thinking. Would be completely unfair of us to say that in a public meeting. However, we will get you that information. Just so you have an idea, of course, that is not final until they have an opportunity to vote on their budgets as well. But we have at least some ballpark numbers as to where people are planning on going.
Just to clarify, the adjusted index, that's the highest we could go, correct? We can do anything lower than that, right?
Absolutely, yep.
This next slide is our LERTAs for the Northern London School District, and all of these are local economic realization tax assistance. So basically, as you can see, every year, 10% is added on to what is taxable for us on their assessed improvements, and you can see all of them there. There's, they all vary at where they're at in the stages. There's still one that hasn't even started construction, finalized construction. That'll be rolling on eventually. But just like to remind you of those numbers and what we have coming on to our taxable books. So this is the impact of a 24, 25 tax increase to the average Northern London School District homeowner. The average assessed value of a home in our school district is $186,000. And up there, I show you three different tax scenarios, a 0%, a 3%, and a 6.5%. You can see what the millage rate would be underneath each of those. You can also see the additional tax revenue for the school district, so that would be the revenue coming into our budget. And then in the yellow is the 24, 25 taxes for those individuals, and what it increased to from the prior year. And I just wanted to make a note of a 0% tax increase, it does net the school district $380,000 more than what we had last year, simply because our assessed value is increasing, and also the LERTA is rolling on. So any of those numbers, you could add 380,000 to, and that's what we would actually be inserting into our budget. But I just wanted to compare apples to apples. That's where you're at with the tax increases.
And Leanne, that number will be updated in the 10-year projection that you gave us, that 300,000 additional?
Oh yeah, that number's included in the budget. That number is included in the 10-year projection when you're in there. I had, because I use the current assessed value.
Gotcha, okay.
Yep. So, trying to get my notes to display. Sorry, they're too big. This revenue for the state right now, that I have over here in the picture on the left-hand side, is shown with a 6.5%, but that's the total revenue, is the $49,241,928. And you can also see what it is at with a 0%. And then obviously, added in the fund balance, like I had said, to show you the total available funds that we have to the school district to cover this year's costs, plus, like I said before, the building sales would be added into there. And in our budget, we also included an additional $500,000. We usually level fund the state. Those of you who have been here for a year, multiple years, have heard Gary and I say, we always level fund the state. However, this year, we felt comfortable that we are going to get an increase from the state based on what the governor has projected. And we did include an additional $500,000 on top of the level funding increase. And then we also included $500,000 in interest that we will be earning just because of where the rates are at, and we'll have the additional money from the building sales and our ending fund balance that we'll be able to invest. So that's a, I usually like to say we take an extremely conservative approach to this. I do feel it's still conservative, but I wanted to let you know that we did take a little, slightly more aggressive approach this year than we have in the past.
Just to point out, again, you know, the unfairness in my mind of the state's willingness to, to properly fund school districts and putting it in the hands of, of local taxpayers. When you can go across the, the state and there's other school districts that have an abundance of businesses or other things to raise revenue, you know, and, and we have, we don't, and, and as, you could probably say that about a lot of rural school districts, but just the, you know, the burden of the, the local taxpayer compared to what the state does. I just think it's important to, to preach that if you're going to any type of activity on the hill, or, you know, you're going to PSBA activity, and it's something that comes up regularly, and I think we need to continue to talk about it.
And then this is what Gary was referencing, that I would be showing you, the long-term financial health of Northern London School District. So this is just taking right out of that 10-year forecast, which you guys will all be receiving. But I wanted to show it here to just give you guys a visual of how the tax increases impact our ending fund balance. So you can see both of them have up there in the top line, the 23 and the 24, which was a 6.5% that we did last year. And then I just gave two scenarios of a 0% on the right-hand side in the blue, and then a 6.5% on the left-hand side in the yellow. And as you can see, even going down then and doing a 3.5% all the way down on the blue side, what that does to our health, the 0%, and then even with the 3.5% all the way down, we never really catch back up. In the yellow side, you can see we have tax, tax increases in there. And then we get down to 2.5%, and just the, the financial health of the school district and the difference between the two. And also, I wanted to point out, Brad and I were discussing this slide before we walked in here, and he had a valid point that we also don't know if we'll have a 3.5% adjusted index all those years to even try to catch up, even though it's futile attempts. But, you know, we don't know what our adjusted index will be going forward.
And that's part of the problem with the funding. What was the, in your recollection, what was the lowest that we've had?
We had some in the low twos.
Yeah, I thought, yeah.
Index?
Yeah, well, with the adjustment.
Okay.
I think we had an index around one, and then it was adjusted into the low twos.
Right, we were around like two and a half.
I don't think I was here yet, but I think that was where it was five, six years ago, maybe.
Yeah.
And so you're at the mercy of where, now, I, it, it won't, it will, they're saying it will drop faster than what they predicted. I don't think we'll get, I don't think it'll even be at 4.5 for two years. They're saying it will drop faster, so it wouldn't shock me if that 26, 27 at least is in the threes. But you have no control over it, and wherever it drops, it drops. When you get this spreadsheet, though, you can put any numbers you want in there. You can put zeros in the whole way down through, you can put twos in the whole way down through. You can put any numbers you want, and it will show you what we have left. Obviously, you can see that even with a zero, and then even going to 3.5 over the next, that's not a formula that is going to work, because we will not be able to cut $13 million off of the budget as, as the, you know, as the years progress. It just, that's not gonna, that piece of it won't work. But you can put anything you want and see where it goes, and we can, you know, talk more about it as we go through the next month.
Right, and I also wanted to point out that the reason there's the drastic decrease there in 26, 27, that is when we'll be making the cash payment out to finish the high school renovation. So like I said, we have that building sales money coming in, but we already know that we need the majority of that money, if not close to all of it, to finish that high school renovation project, because we, our borrowing capacity is maxed out, but we need to finish paying what we've already committed to. Most of them are, I can get you the exact dates of them. I don't have them written down in front of me, but they all kind of taper off in the same year. So they, they're kind of, they're, they're flexed in there to end around the same time. And I can get you all those maturities. So the total expenses, I wanted to highlight some things on this, but as you can see, it's 49.9 million. And one of the things, you know, you can see the colors there, but the salaries, benefits, and the bond payment alone, total 36 million or 72% of our budget. And then if you add in purchased, purchased services, which is another 17%, and is mainly charter school and transportation costs, we're at roughly about 89% of our budget. So those things alone are a large portion of our budget that, for all intensive purposes, are out of our control. Significant expense items that I wanted to draw your attention to again are the salary and benefits. They did increase 2.2 million. However, salaries increased 1 million, benefits increased 1.2 million. And that's, that's an odd scenario for us this year, and the main driver of that was our health insurance. We had to do a larger increase to that this year, just because of where we're at with claims. And I also wanted to highlight the fact that just our budgeted employees, back in 1920, I was budgeting for 294 employees. This year, I am budgeting for 279. We did say through attrition and everything moving into this building, we would be downsizing our employees, and we were able to do that. And that 279 number does include the open positions that we have for custodians right now. We are short approximately 10 custodians.
And just to piggyback off of that, one, the custodian thing, the good news is that since we've adjusted wages, we haven't had anybody leave. The bad news is, we also haven't had anybody come. So we're still, still using our service for some of that. That takes into account, the CBA is, is already, you know, that's been agreed to. That's a 3.5% raise for our teachers. So what we did was, we used that figure across the board for everybody, including classified and administrators. But we used the CBA figure that we can't change. We could change. Remember, you guys have to vote on classified raise and administration, I have 93 raise. In June, typically, we do that, but the CBA is already set in stone. I, I do want to, I, you know, I, I think that when we look at those numbers and going from two, you know, 15, 15 folks, you know, the, the, the building has kind of helped, we talked about that, and there's been a savings there. There's no doubt about it. If we had been still at 294 employees and adding their salaries plus another 3.5%, you're talking about an even bigger, a more significant increase. So I think we've done some, some good things with that, but at the same time. Oh, and that also includes, that also includes, you guys had, the board had talked to me as we opened up this building about some of the needs that they felt. And I kind of asked for a year to get in and see where we were. I, I feel like it was you, Stacy, but I can't remember. Maybe I'm wrong about, you know, a guidance counselor for this, for the building. We agree. We're kind of looking for a hybrid guidance counselor slash social worker. We have the social worker up at the high school. We actually applied for a grant, and so to add a guidance counselor, at least for the next year and a half, we were going, we would have a grant to pay for that salary. Another, another position would be the, the, the social worker at the high school, that's a secondary school that's been there for a couple of years now. She's on a contract, and, and we're at a point where we, we believe that that social worker is doing- She's on a contract and, and we're at a point where we, we believe that that social worker is doing some tremendous things. It was something that the board had desired to look into. We're ready to move her from the contracted position to, to an actual employee. That does cost us some benefits. But in general, you know, we got a little bit of a hometown deal with her. But in general, it is, and we talked about this with speech, it often is a little bit cheaper to have someone on staff than it is to be contracted, going back to that conversation we had earlier. In this case, like I said, we got a little hometown deal, but I don't know that that was gonna last forever. But she's, I think, been a welcome addition. So well, we would remove that salary from a paid contract to on the staff. And then thirdly, we have been using Effective School Solutions over the past two years through an ESSER grant to provide some of our more severe needs kids with special education services over here at the elementary. Was it Jonestown and Fredericksburg, it's now here. I'm sorry, you're right, thank you, thank you. Yes, it was intervention for kids, not, not in special education. Are what we call our tier two, tier three behavior kids that we're not, we're not learning support kids. They're limited by contract to about 15 kids. And honestly, while, while we wanted to try it out, there was a, I think we only really did it because we had the ESSER funds to, to try it out. We do believe there is a need for special, a special education person, a special education consultant is what we call the position, that would focus strictly on elementary to be able to provide support for our, we're gonna, we're gonna use that for some of our higher special education needs, bringing up some time for our guidance counselors and administrators to work with some of those tier two, tier three kids. And that would be the position. So you got one position that you're, that you're taking on benefits and you have one position that's paid for with a grant. And so it's really one and, one position and the benefits. And that is included in the 279 figure. So that, that's what we're looking at for next year. I do think that now that we're settled, we have a pretty good idea of what, what the needs are. And I think those address those needs.
Correct, and the 2.2 million also includes those three positions that Gary just.
Yeah, thank you.
And the other significant expense item obviously is our bond payments that are coming on. And this year alone, budget to budget, was a one and a half million dollar increase for our bond. So that's a, takes us up to 5.5 million. And then over the course of the next two years, we're looking at another $600,000 each year. Finally, now it's out to 6.7 million dollars in bond payments annually for the next 20 or so years, so. And again, I always just like to highlight this charter schools, while this isn't necessarily an increase in our budget, we are budgeted at 2.1 million dollars for next year in charter schools. Obviously, we'd love to have some reform there for some relief to us. It's not anything that we really have much control over, it's just something we pay a monthly bill to. And then this is our last slide, just to round out and show you the numbers of this year's budget with the expense numbers and the revenue numbers that I had said previously, where it brings us to. With those two impacted there for the 24, 25. And also, again, I just put in a note there that those 23, 24 ending fund balance numbers will be increasing due to the building sales settling in 23, 24. And if you recall last year when we approved the budget, we did have those numbers in there on the files that we sent to PDE because we were anticipating them. I just like to take them out to compare operationally our expenses and revenues, what we're doing so that we can show consistency through the years. And if anyone has any questions, we will take those now.
Now, let me just, let me just say one thing before that. This, later this week, for those of you who have been on the board before, you're gonna get a written synopsis outlining a lot of this with a little more detail than, than this as well to look through. We don't, you don't do anything next week, there's no vote on this, there's no, you know, you don't have to do anything right now. The next time you're gonna see it is in May. You can ask questions, you can arrange to meet with Leanne, we can meet together. You have over a month here to, to work through anything that you want to talk about, play with the spreadsheet that she'll send out, read the synopsis. And then in May, we do vote at the regular meeting to adopt the proposed. But then you also can change your mind between May and June in that timeframe as well. So in June, then, then it's voted, you know, voted on and we get it up on the website and turn it into PDE. So that's the process. All right, questions? Might be one of those things where there's too much information to ask questions at this time. Digest it, like Leanne said, we'll have it up on board docs for you. I, I still have the presentation to email you, I could probably email both too, just so they have it in an email, it might be easiest. And then we'll have that synopsis, but, but feel free to call anytime, set up a meeting if, you know, if we're, if we're tied up or whatever, we can, we can answer more questions and talk through it with anyone that needs, wants to.
Yeah, Leanne, this is very detailed and informative, appreciate it. I guess I did have one question regarding the general fund unassigned balance at 3.4, 5 million. Are you, when you look at this, are you targeting a certain unassigned general fund balance for the 26, 27 year when we've got that large payment due for the, for the renovations?
I'm not targeting an unassigned fund balance. We can use capital projects, like the money that we've set aside to cover that, because that's kind of what we're going into this, knowing that we will have that expense. So we will put that into the capital projects assigned fund and we will pull that out of there to pay that amount. So, you know, do I have a targeted number? No, I'd like to stay, obviously, just for the safekeeping of the district, around the 8% that is recommended by PDE, but not. That's not where I plan on having that, those funds come from. I believe that we'll move the money from the building sales into capital projects is what I'm recommending. And then we have that set there aside, that, that's where the money comes from that year when we need it. So that it's not hitting our operational budget, impacting us, our unassigned ending fund balance.
Right, but there's, there's a value to us keeping that balance somewhere in the 8% area. Because I think three point, I think 8% would be 3.9 or something, so we're right, right around that area.
Right, we can't go over 4 million this year.
Yeah, right, okay, okay.
And there's different schools of thought. I've spoken to board members that don't want to keep anything in fund balance. And 20 years ago, you could do that because you could, if you got into a situation where prices skyrocketed for whatever reason, you could just raise taxes to meet those needs at any given, any given year. You could increase it 10% if you wanted to, because there was no index that you had to, to go by. That has created, sure, they were trying to be helpful, but it has created a problem for school districts because if they're become unexpected expenses, you don't have the ability to meet those expenses by raising, by raising revenue. You're at the mercy of, of what the state says.
Any other questions? Okay, great, we'll be looking for more information that we can, that we can work with. It's good, thank you. Next item is public comment, there was no public comment for this evening. So we'll just move to establishing our calendar for next week. Dr. Messinger, if you just want to take over item five?
Yeah, sure, five, one, two and three are typical activity count minutes, catch disbursements. Item, item six is about this time we get the IU 13 budget. We always approve that prior to our budget because that tells Leanne how much to put in her budget. And then in addition to that, in about a month, we'll get the CTC budget as well. But the IU budget and their, their proposal and their changes, summary of changes are all there for you to look through. If you have questions, you know, let us know over the course of the week. Stacy, did you have, did they go over that with you?
They did.
Okay, anything you wanted to add to that?
Nothing other than, I mean, you know, they're very thorough over there. I mean, Tina is excellent at what she does and I wouldn't have any concerns about the IU budget at all.
All right, item seven, this is an MOU that we have with tender years. We've had it for a long time, it's up for renewal. We serve as their emergency evacuation place. If something would ever happen and they needed to evacuate, they would come here and then they would dismiss kids to families from our, from our district. On the other side of that, the next one is actually between us and the Expo Center, which is where we go if we would have an evacuation situation. And then that outlines our responsibilities for them. Obviously, they're not gonna be responsible for getting the kids home, we're doing that, you know, so. But at the same time, you know, I'm to notify them, we'd be going over there, that would be where we would house the kids until we could get everyone safely home. And then there were a few tiny tweaks to the grant for recreational funds with Union Township. I believe I got everything that was supposed to be tweaked there and that's on there for you as well.
Okay, before we move on to eight, are there any questions on 6.1 or the items in seven? Is there any desire from any member of the board to move those to discussion?
Well, if you could just quickly just clarify, I'm fine with it, but do we know what space they would use? The, the tender, the tender years, you know, do we know what space exactly they would use here?
I, I mean, it depends on the time of day that, that it would occur for us. A gym, one of the, the collaboration, thank you, geez, couldn't think of it, learning stairs, potentially the cafeteria, depending on the time of day. It's gonna depend a little bit on what we have, what we would have going on. If they're evacuating, you know, you, in, in the old days, a lot of these were put in for Three Mile Island. You know, and I'm not sure, you, you might want to keep going north if that were the case. But now it would be something, you know, that they're probably having internally. But that would, that would kind of depend a little bit on when, when they would be coming.
Now, I, I doubt that this would ever happen, but worst-case scenario, what happens if we're going to the Expo Center and this daycare needs to go someplace, do they follow us to the Expo Center?
There's a notification process, so they would be notifying us and then I would be notifying, but I would have to say, listen, we're evacuating ourselves, here's where we're headed.
Okay.
I don't, I, I, do you have additional questions?
Couple of things, we can, we can deny, we, we would be unavailable for them to relocate to in that case. And the other point is, is that we, we are working on our other relocation options. If you read in the one specific to the Expo Center, they have an event, they're gonna deny us our ability to go there. We have one currently, well, needs to be updated, but we have one with the gap as well. As you may recall, if you've been in the board for a while, that's been a longstanding relocation point for us. There's a couple of other ones that we're working through details with as well, so that we have options. And Tender's daycare should be working on the same type of philosophy, that we're not the one and only relocation point for them.
Thank you.
I was also curious, they're out of.
Can you, can you speak in your mic?
I'm sorry, they're, they're out of Hershey. I was just curious why they picked someplace, seemed kind of far if you're in a hurry to evacuate.
I, I again think it was more related to getting out of, needing to get out of Hershey for some reason to a more, to a setting. I, I can think of potentially even, I was, I was a principal a couple of years ago when a hurricane went through. Hershey was a, a mess of flooding, kind of, and you could not get, you could not get to things in Hershey because of the way some of those roads flood. And getting out of Hershey to another place, I, I, I can't answer probably, you know, their complete intent, but my guess is to get farther removed from Hershey so that it's a little more rural of a setting.
And that why we picked the Expo as well, we had a little bit of ways to go.
I mean, like, like Brad, you're looking for spaces that are big enough to be able to run an operation of dismissal, to be able to keep everybody safe and, and run an operation of dismissal out of and, and have the ability to communicate as well. So like a church for us, even like a London Free Church, depending if we were doing the whole district, you know, it's a relatively big church that's close by, but it's still not big enough for us to comfortably fit in that situation. Some of these have been in place for years, I'll be, I'll be truthful, the rationale behind a specific place, although I'm familiar with the process and have been a part of the process in a variety of different school districts, you're picking places that, one, you can control traffic, you can get through dismissal and have enough space. Why the, why the Expo Center, I couldn't tell you why specifically that was picked over.
It's size, size and availability. You know, the logic would tell you that a school district is probably a likely candidate, but then you look at the size of districts around us and the space that they have available and the fact that we would be bringing all of our students and all of our staff, you know, creates an issue for finding something large enough. So you'll, you'll see some other creative ideas coming as long as they work out. We're not in a position to, to discuss them quite yet, but just look around warehouses won't take us generally, even though they have a lot of space under roof and probably could handle the, the influx of traffic. That's not a safety thing that they're interested in. Some of our local businesses that are larger don't really have the facilities to accommodate the mass gathering and sorting that would need to hap, happen in order for a successful and safe dismissal. So lots of things are in play when, when you sit down and start looking at what's available and, and who would be willing to agree to it.
Good questions.
I have one additional comment on, well, first, for the Expo Center, are there any other districts, or be the only district that has the MOU with them, you know, mentioning situations where we're evacuating?
I'm not sure, Cedar Crest might, but I'm not, not positive on that.
And then the, on the tender years, I actually did a little bit of reconnaissance on that. And I believe that does relate to the Three Mile Island planning because Dairy Township School District, this was their relocation site, so I imagine that's what that is. Legally, per state law, that they're only required to have an evacuation point, doesn't matter where it is, it just has to be another relocation point, so there's not any reason that they have to come here. So it just, you know, I wanted to provide that information, that that's why that's there, but there are no plans for Three Mile Island anymore, so.
Yeah, I think that changed, I mean, these are the types of things that I, I give, you know, Brad and a safety team do a great job of keeping up with these things. But these are the types of agreements that have been around for years. And Three Mile Island was, you know, a legitimate, I, I know that, you know, working in Dolphin County in a school district, we were going to Pine Grove to just get out of the area. And I think some of these have been around because of that for a long time.
Okay, great, good discussion, move on.
Yeah, okay, so I'm on eight. 8.1 is a, an opportunity for middle school kids to go overseas. It's a limited amount, six to eight, but something that, that is new for us. And 8.2 is the new Northern London Ag Advisory member list.
So the, the trip to Ireland and England, I mean, can I go? But I, I guess the question I have is what's administrative, administration recommendation for an overseas trip for middle schoolers? Any concerns, you're comfortable with the proposed arrangement?
I mean, personally, I think that depends on which middle schooler it is. I, I would have been comfortable sending my daughter in middle school. I don't know that I would have been as comfortable sending my son. I think the process needs to be clearly outlined. I, I might not still send him, yeah, yeah. The process of, of selection, you know, I, I think they're gonna have to think through that clearly. You know, parents are gonna have to be on board with it. It, it's a tremendous experience, I mean, I'm sure it's a great trip. I, I like the, the things they have planned, but it is new for us to, to go to that level.
Well, when I, in reading it, wouldn't these students technically be ninth graders by the time?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I mean, they're technically not at middle school, so they'd be high school.
There you go, that solves the problem.
The other item.
I'm gonna say, well, I don't know if I'd send my son either.
The other item to note is the agency that they're using, EF Tours is who we have experienced with as a district. That's Costa Rica and some of our Spanish trips have been through them. And the one that was recently approved to Europe, or I believe it was the Art Club, is also through them. So it's a, a known group.
Yeah, they, they work with educational entities quite frequently, they are very well organized, they lay things. They are very well organized, they lay things out, they have meetings ahead of time. So there, a lot of that stuff is taken care of.
I, I really do like that it's a cooperative with Cedar Crest as well. I think that's, that's a good proposal, okay.
I don't know that you'd get enough kids at that age level to, to do it without some, but.
Okay.
Okay, all right, nine point one policies. There weren't too many questions, there was a grammatical thing that I'll, I'll figure, just changing an and to or. But there, some questions came up about some of the things that were, came in the draft that I'll let Barry kind of talk about. One of them was passes for the board. And when I be clear that, that everyone does get a pass from the London Lancaster League that's on, that sits on the board, that you can use to get into athletic events unless it's a playoff. There's some stipulations to it, but you do get a pass from the league. We do offer the senior citizens the gold card. That was in the old policy and, and honestly inadvertently, it was in green along with the board. And I'll, again, I'll let Barry talk about the, the board part of it. We did not mean to drag that out, so we're going to add that back in. Although my argument would be it doesn't necessarily need to be in policy, it's more of a procedural thing, but I don't have a problem with it being in policy. And then ultimately wanted to discuss too, there is an option there that was not in our old board policy. However, we do it in practice, again, do you want it in policy? And that would be check marking that faculty get into, to the events for free as well.
Right, so, so as Dr. Messinger said, when we were going over this, this, just to give you the insight on first of all, the, the selection on the board being admitted without charge. From, from my perspective, I didn't like the, the appearance of the board granting itself a perk under policy, especially when it's something that is done anyway by administration, by the league. So that was the, that was the thinking for that. Dr. Messinger mentioned the senior citizens portion and then the district personnel's as well. So, so really the question here, so we do all this stuff anyway by administrative policy. This is the administration's choice to provide these, these, these free access to the district personnel. And, and as he said to the senior citizens, the question is whether we as a board want to memorialize those in a board policy, to say this is the policy of the board, just to make sure that those are cemented. So I, I think the proposal is for us to discuss that tonight. And then based on the discussion this evening, we either keep this draft policy as it is with the understanding that, you know, that the administration provides these, these opportunities for folks without the board doing so, or do we want to go ahead and, and memorialize it from a board's perspective? And then depending on what we determine today, we'll modify that policy and put it on for vote next week. So open it up to discussion, any questions for clarification that, that you might need?
One way of looking at it might be that since we have access to the building, it's kind of assumes you can go where you want under, you know.
It could, except, except for certain games, you would charge admission.
Right.
And so typically, so right now, we have the, we have the, the pass that's provided by the league that we just are able to use that pass to get in, but yeah, that's.
But I'm just saying, we're not like really voting for ourselves to get in if we could get in.
I understand, yeah, that's, that's fair.
Just the wording of it.
Sure, yeah. Any strong feelings about modification of this? Do we want to incorporate these things as part of the board policy or, or leave them off? And, and, and the important point about all this with policy is that at any point, we can go back and change the policy. If we think it's not working, we can, we can modify the policy.
The, the, the point of a policy is really not to get too specific, correct?
That depends on perspective, I think that's a fair perspective, for sure.
But I mean, generally.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and I think it was either you or Dr. Messinger that message. I mean, those are more procedural than policy anyway.
Yeah.
And of course, the superintendent administration would have the flexibility to change that anytime they wanted to. If you have it in the policy, then you'd have to redo the whole policy if they decided to change it.
Correct, yeah.
So, I mean, I, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Not being included.
Okay.
For that, mainly for that reason.
I would agree, and that'd be fine, per piquet to the administration.
Okay.
Well, for my tenure anyway, I see no reason to not continue with our current practice. I do, I do have the PSBA now, Administrative Procedures, I'll look and see how it's worded on that. You know, we'll continue with that practice for now.
So I just want to check, Director Blau, did you want to move anything into policy or did you want to leave it as is?
Um, the part of crossing it out, I'm okay with.
Okay.
It's, I'm not sure exactly which one you're putting that under.
Uh, so crossing it out is leaving it as is, so moving forward with a vote with the draft policy as it's written right now?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Any other thoughts? Okay, great, good discussion, appreciate it.
Okay.
Clarification.
Um, any other questions on the policies?
Uh, yeah, I had one on seven hundred, the building security. The, the one section I didn't like, and I'm sorry, I've just gotten to read around, read this today, where it's talking about trespassing and police officers arresting, which the wording is kind of odd because they're saying after one hour after the conclusion of activity, you got to think of what if somebody's waiting for a ride home or somebody's walking their dog, like it just seems very harsh to be like, anybody's that trespassing after hours or after, you know, or some kids on the playground on Saturday. So I, I didn't really like the whole, I feel like it could be, like you said, more broad, like, you know, follow, you need to follow the board policy or we're going to come down on our rules.
I have to, I have to agree with her on this one. I think the wording on trespassing on a public taxpayer funded is basically, I don't know, I, I personally think it's a slap on the face on, on the taxpayers. So, you know, trespassing, like she was saying, you know, you basically can't use your facility to walk around the, the track or walk a dog without being arrested. Am I correct on this? But I, I, I feel like the trespassing word.
Well, so.
And that, and that, and that policy should be removed. All, you know, simple, simple little, all individuals using a school property are required to comply with the rules and regulation and/or rules or conduct of district as may be approved by the board from time to time is fine. I do agree with a little bit of the, the vandalism. That, that would definitely have to make sure that be, if there is vandalism going on, on the school, to be reported and taken care of immediately. But as far as the use of facilities trespassing wise, I think that needs to be removed.
Okay, thanks, that, that, these are great questions and comments. So I think we're getting a little bit into the realm of we may need solicitor input on this because trespass has a very distinct legal definition and legal meaning. So the track that's around, that is, my understanding, my belief is that it would like, likely not be trespassing because it has a specific legal definition. So I would recommend that we, we take this policy, circulate those questions to Stock and Leader for some input on that because I think those are, those are really great points. And I, I would just point out that it, the district authorizes local police officer arrests. It's not, it's not declaring that police officers must arrest in that situation, but it's, it's to, to provide that, that specification. But Ms. Say, do you have any input on that that you can share publicly?
Yeah, I, I do, I was pulling up the policy while we were talking about it. And, and that was the new language that was added when Dr. Dalton did her review. It is rooted in criminal trespass. It's pretty common language that we see. And, and as President Nam said, I, I think the flex that we create there is around the authority. So there are various times when you can be put on notice of trespassing, essentially when you don't have a legitimate purpose to be where you are in approved purpose. The, the one hour timeframe, I, I want to look, because I, I don't, I don't think that's straight out of the law. I think that's probably a PSBA recommendation, right? That probably has some wiggle room, right? Depending on the nature of, you know, say it's a, you know, you're having, you're hosting a lock-in, right? And the kiddos are, are leaving, parents are picking up, and there are a handful of kids that are left over with, with personnel there, right? And then one person stays to the very, very end. It's not like we'd be, we'd be arresting those people for trespass. The purpose behind this section is to enable the police, if they so choose, based upon the encouragement of the district essentially, to determine someone does not have an authorized purpose, they have remained past the time that the district feels is appropriate, and their refusal to leave becomes illegal. And we want to have some version of a sliding scale, so I will look into where that one hour language comes from. But the purpose of this is to sort of set a minimum relative to our potential call for a police involvement. Just because someone has passed the one hour mark doesn't mean the district necessarily calls the police or that your school police officer has the authority to do something or will do something. So anyway, I will get some of the background for you to sort of add on to the explanation of that policy so you're ready for discussion at next week's meeting.
Brooke, can you just elaborate a little bit on, you know, I'm thinking, just thinking about several things that kind of are typically for us open just for public use, our walking path, our track, our tennis courts.
Correct.
Or even, even some of our athletic facilities where, you know, kids over the summer, there's nothing organized, they're not part of a group, they come down and kick the ball around because they're on the soccer team.
Correct.
Or, or the recent grads going to college, like how, what's the, you know, I think that's, I don't know that I see that necessarily specifically in this definition because it says authorized school activity, well, that wouldn't fit that. It says authorized rental of school facilities, and it wouldn't fit that. Or it says authorized use of facilities by school-related groups. It's not necessarily, although there are kids that go there, but the, the people that play tennis aren't, it wouldn't be that. So is that just covered by procedurally, we allow it? Or I, I think that's to me where I get hung up a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I'm actually not familiar with any district to, who legislates. Well, I, I should say this, I don't know that, that I know of a district that specifically legislates through policy the concept of an open campus, right? And I mean that not in the concept of seniors being able to come and go, but most school districts have a concept of an open to the public campus. Sometimes there are exclusions to that and there's posted signs relative to say use of a track after dark, right? You know, if you have a cross-country course, the district might post that they, you don't want runners after dusk, right? All of that relates to property liability, but, but it, I would say it is pretty common for most school districts to have an open campus concept relative to public use. And those public uses, if they fall within the, you know, posted signage for whatever part of, of district property you're using, that's never considered a trespass. It's, it, you know, it's essentially a community asset and you want to encourage people to be there. This section is about, you know, people lingering past the time that they're authorized to be there after a district personnel has identified that they shouldn't be there anymore, right? You know, it's, it's really, it's also applicable, right? We, we do trespass at times, we'll put notices at the front of school buildings that say, you know, if you're not authorized for entry, you could be deemed to have trespassing. We can send notices to parents that are disruptive on school property and limit their, how they, how they can come on school property to the extent that they've been threatening or disruptive of the educational environment, and that's enforced through a no trespass kind of action. At the end of the day, it's, it's really about different scenarios, but the open campus concept of, of enabling people to use your elementary school playground, of doing a pickup soccer game on the field if they're not already, already being used, of running on your cross-country track. All of that is within the normal use. At times, you just might want to regulate it based upon the season or the equipment or any of the other sort of seasonal dangers that might be present. So I agree with Gary, it's, this provision is not intended to address many of the things that I'm sure happen in Northern Lib.
So is there, just thinking about other policies, if, if we defined trespassing, does that help? Like, like I, I heard you give a kind of a definition there of something that, that people aren't authorized, that the district has not authorized to do.
Yeah.
If kids are climbing over the fieldhouse to get into the football field that is locked up, that, that is trespassing. But is there, would there, I mean, if we defined that word.
You certainly, yeah.
The one hour thing, I, I completely agree with, I've been here two hours after activities sometimes.
Sure, sure.
But, but maybe a definition of what trespassing is helps too, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that would be a problem at all, and I'm just looking to see if you actually have a site to criminal trespass in the list of citations here. No, you don't.
The title eighteen is not, not listed there.
Yeah, so you don't, and, and I mean, interestingly, there are, there are different types of trespass that we utilize relative to like a true criminal conviction. One is criminal trespass relating to buildings and occupied structures, so that's someone who's refusing to leave your building, right? And then there's defiant trespassers, of people who are told you don't have a license or privilege to be here and you, you either stay here or you refuse to leave, or we've posted that you're not permitted to be here and that sort of thing. And so there's, you know, there's those as well, and within that, different versions of that, there's even trespass relative to parts of agriculture. So we can tie it in to the definition. I, I think what I want to check with Dr. Dalton is what is the purpose as PSBA sees this? Because this section in and of itself is only about building security. It's not really addressing your ground. It's about people not leaving a facility. That's really the purpose. So I can, I can get some clarity on that and where the one hour comes from, and we can build in a citation to the definition of criminal trespass. Again, that could be overdoing it because the whole purpose of this is that a district person is, says, this person doesn't have the privilege, doesn't have the license, they haven't, they have been told they can no longer be on property and they're refusing to leave. And that would have to be in the estimation of a district administrator who is there making that determination, which again, as Gary said, you kind of know it when you see it. You know, groups rent facilities for periods of time, they're not doing anything they shouldn't be doing, and someone needs to lock up and they refuse to leave, maybe you have that kind of conversation. But it's going to fall within that discretion.
Thanks, Brooke. Why, why don't we do this then? Why don't we take them, take a, a month to take a look at this? And let's see if, if you can put some parameters around this that, that make it a little more solid to address the concerns. We've got four policies that we have up for vote next week and two retirements, so I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to move that to April. And that'll give us a chance to, to really kind of put some parameters around this to address concerns that I think were really, really well stated.
Move it to May even.
Did I say April? This is April, May, yeah, let's move it to May, sorry. I'm still stuck.
Ten-four. Yes, no worries, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Brooke, appreciate it, and good comments, thank you, thank you, folks, that's really good. And, and there's, there's a whole robust, you know, case law about what is and is not trespass and, and that we can make this better, yeah, great. Okay, thank you.
So I did bring up conflict of interest. There was a little discrepancy if there's a perceived conflict of interest with the board president, it goes to the superintendent, then to the solicitor. That didn't follow through in paragraph one, if we can just add the.
Right, so.
Report to the solicitor.
Let's pull that up just so that everyone is following along. So you had an email, Director England, you had indicated that, okay, so it's under the.
Resolving conflict. Reporting.
Reporting, so if you look at the policy on page three, we've got, okay, so in paragraph two, the last phrase, shall report the incident to the solicitor. I think Director England, what you're suggesting is that we repeat that phrase or actually copy that phrase and put it up in paragraph one. Okay, so that when it's a perceived conflict of interest that is pertaining to the superintendent, that would also be reported to the solicitor. Makes sense? Yeah, I think that's a, a clear and concise addition that makes a lot of sense, okay? Any issues with that change? Okay, good, then we'll make that revision and we'll, we'll keep that on the agenda for next week. Great, thank you. Okay, any others on policies?
I have one more, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
On nine hundred four, I think there's somewhat another policy where we had listed, it says inherent guidance from state and local officials, and we wanted to change it more to like guidance by the board rather than, because it mentions health and safety a lot in here. So I think it's probably back to the COVID time or, I hear it like under authority. It said, in accordance with board-approved plans. I think in another policy, we nixed the part that says in guidance from state and local officials.
Okay. So to be consistent with the other language to strike.
Like it should be like a board.
And guidance from state and local officials, okay. I would agree that that was the intent of our draft of this.
Yeah, and I also saw health crossed out a few times, but not all the times where it said health and safety plans.
Okay.
I also have a question on the nine hundred, on the public attendance in school events.
Okay, let's, before we move to that one, let's.
I just want to clarify, what are we, what's our official title for our safety plan?
Our emergency operations.
Emergency operations. I just want to make sure we're not.
I believe she's correct in the assumption that this is referring to the COVID time.
Right.
Yes.
I think there's, I think that there's, I mean, we do have procedures in place that are related to health and safety. But I think the term got coined in COVID, and that, and yes, my mind doesn't always go there, but.
But I would argue that the EOP, as well as the Health and Safety Plan, are board-approved documents and therefore guidance by the board.
Yeah, I mean, as of right now, we still have a health and safety plan.
Yeah, I'm okay with the board part, but I think it should stop at the board and not go on to state and local officials.
Oh, I see.
As far as the plan, what we called it.
Gotcha.
Just called it safety plan and other policy.
Gotcha, yep.
Yeah, I agree with Martha on this plan or on this policy. It's, the policy seems a little disjointed. You know, it starts out talking about public attendance at school events, and then goes into a whole lot of information about tobacco use.
That was the.
And it just doesn't really fit in, I think, with the rest of the policy. You know, why is there this big, long definition and sections on tobacco use when we're talking about public attendance at school events in relation to safety procedures on campus?
Can we sub that tobacco products into the policy of two-two-two under tobacco? Like Martha, yeah, like Shen said, it really doesn't fit the public attendance in the school events.
I think.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, Gary, you go. I know you're going to say the difference between the students and the public.
Policy seven-eleven was referred to public use of tobacco on campus. But policy seven-eleven has been recommended to be retired by PSBA. And so they've worked that part of the, that policy, they worked that into the public attendance at school events. We sat and asked that same question when we were doing it, and then recognized the fact that they were getting rid of seven-eleven and sticking it in to that. And that's a PSBA thing that I don't have the background on. Brooke, do you, do you have additional information on why that was done?
I don't. And I, it's been a while since I think that's been in the PNN. So other than what you said, it's for efficiency purposes because the standalone, the standalone policy all in one, when you're addressing what issues you could have with the public, they're trying to put it all together. When it was spread out before, I think most people were, were just, like, when it had its own designation, like, people weren't looking at it, looking for it. And we don't really have many other standalone policies for specific behavior other than for the people we most, you most regulate, which are students and personnel. So my guess is, as you said, for efficiency purposes, and because it's addressed a bunch of other places.
And I'm guessing that the two-hundreds wouldn't work because that's pupils.
Right.
Exactly right. And three-hundreds is employees.
Yeah, the two-hundred series are just for pupils, so for students. So the two-hundred series policies address students. So the policy that we have for student possession of tobacco would necessarily have to be different than public possession of tobacco since we cannot, we cannot enforce whether somebody that can legally own and possess tobacco. So that's, that's why, that's why the tobacco reference and all of that is in this nine-hundred series. And that's why it has to be included in the public participation of school events because we do have to have a policy that governs whether they can use tobacco on school grounds, but it's separate from our policy for students.
It's odd, though. I agree with both of you, it's odd, but I don't, I don't know how to fix that necessarily.
The other one that they said they wanted to retire was seven oh nine point one, and they just list the two other numbers where it's supposedly moved into different sections. But I went and read those policies, and you might want to go read them. I mean, and there's certain things that leaves out that I don't know that we want to leave out. Like they list the kind of people they don't want on the campus, and it, like, there's like ten different, I can't remember, it's seven oh seven, oh nine, oh four, but it says everything from drug dealers to no possession of weapons, to court order, restraining order, and they don't list that.
Well, so, so we did look at these when we, when we looked at the policy. Our thinking was if there are people that are breaking the law, then they are legally excluded.
Blanket.
Yeah. So to go back to our prior sort of discussion is that to make these as broad as possible, you know, if we specify certain, certain folks that are in violation of law, we might miss other ones that are in violation of law. So rather have the presumption that if you're breaking the law, you shouldn't be on the school grounds.
Right. But I mean, like, the one mentions like drug use, but it doesn't mention drug dealers. So you could use, you can, you know, it's like, you can do one, but you can't do the other.
Is that?
So that's another one where it's kind of, so you can't break the law. I just read it.
Don't break the law.
That's what I.
Yeah. Okay, so where are we at on this? So Director Moore, was your question on the same policy then that Director Kreiser was asking about? Because I cut you off, and I wanted to make sure that we were.
Well, you summed it up pretty well as far as the students.
Okay.
For that policy there, because, and then we have to separate, like you were saying, going forward. I'm just, I'm just wishing that they could have just made a separate little, under the nine-hundred community, a separate little tobacco use instead of adding it into the public attendance in school events. That's, that's all.
I see. I see.
Well, that one, that one's coming off, right? We're waiting until May on that one, nine oh four.
Yeah.
I mean, I certainly will reach out to PSBA and add, I mean, Brooke might know too, but PSBA probably can give me something, explanation.
Hold on, hold on. No, we're taking, we're taking seven oh nine. We're taking.
Seven oh nine.
Well, seven oh nine.
That one was nine oh four, the one.
Nine oh four.
And I'm happy to ask about the background of nine oh four as well. That's, I wasn't the one that did the review. I can only look at what's in the comments for the individuals who did do the review, but just to see like what the motivator is. I mean, I can speak broadly and say PSBA is trying to eliminate standalone policies that have become increasingly less relevant. And so I expect this is one of those, like, you know, when we're trying to address, what do we do with the public? They're like, well, what are the different ways we regulate the public? When they can be on property and what things they're prohibited from doing? That's my guess as to what they would say, but I can find out the background.
Well, so we have, we have a suggestion to remove the references to state and local officials, which I agree would meet the intent of this as well. We can make that modification and keep nine oh four on for a vote with the other, well, we didn't make any other changes. So we can leave that on for a vote next week, making those small revisions. Or we can do what we did with seven oh nine and move it to May. My proposal would be to leave it on for next week. My personal perspective is that I think there's a purpose and a identifiable purpose for keeping the tobacco and those sort of references in this public participation or public attendance, school events policy. But I'll defer to the, to the will of the board otherwise. Do we want to move it to May or leave it on for vote next week?
I'm okay with leaving it on for vote.
Okay, okay. All right, then we'll do that. We'll leave it on for vote next week. And I just remind everyone again, you know, with all of these policies, when we vote on them, you do not have to vote yes just because in committee, we said this is, this is a good policy for vote that does not bind you to an affirmative vote next week, okay?
And we're also tweaking eight twenty-seven, right? Conflict of interest.
Yep, eight twenty-seven, so small edit to eight twenty-seven. We're going to move seven oh nine to May, small edit to nine oh four, and that's it.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you mean seven oh nine or seven hundred you're talking about?
Seven oh nine is what we're moving to May.
Which one was building security?
That's seven oh seven.
Seven oh nine.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, you have to have these memorized at the end of your first year.
Are these going to be for discussion or not? For next week?
Would you like to have it on discussion?
I'm just asking, you know, I mean.
I mean, if anyone wants to have it on discussion.
A lot of discussion going on here, so I don't know.
Sure. Yes. My intent would be to put it on consent, but if anyone would like to discuss these next week, let me know, speak up. We'll move them to discussion if we need to.
I'll also just mention, you can actually move things on discussion the night of too, if you ever wanted to.
Yeah.
You know, something comes up.
Or between today and next week, send us an email. We want to move that to discussion, that's fine.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. So as of now, we're going to be putting them on consent. But if you want to move them to discussion, speak now, email us this week or say something next Tuesday, okay? Great.
Okay. Nine point two is the list of Accelerate courses that are used by V3 that are offered. We don't use them all, but that are offered by Accelerate for V3. Nine point three is our special education plan. Thank you to those that helped review that. I know Kelly appreciates the help. It's a lengthy document to look through. Appreciate the board's help with those. Any questions on nine two and nine three?
Is the education, special education plan the same thing, same plan over this school year and the following school year as far as the programs?
It is. Kelly, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Please.
Yeah, please, yeah, yeah. There were sixty-some pages, and my knees were going to hurt.
Yeah, you can see how like our classroom space, like the dimensions of it, that's fascinating. So yes and no. There were some changes. The last we did it was twenty-one, twenty-two. There were some changes to it, but very slight. So, I mean, the biggest changes honestly were some personnel. We have to put down caseloads on it. So some of those numbers have changed, not really staffing, just how many students teachers have, especially the high school caseloads, those went down significantly. I revised some things in positive behavior support because we're doing Valiant Bikes K through twelve right now. Otherwise, not much has changed. I hate to say, it's very more, I don't know, it doesn't really go over everything that we do here for special education. It's very specific to what PDE gives us to fill out. So while there is some program description, it doesn't go really deep into it. Any other question?
It's geared to make sure we're doing the.
Yeah, that we're in compliance. Yeah, yeah. And then when we get monitored.
Believe it or not, when we move a class, a special education class, we got to look at the dimensions, and they may come out and check the room to make sure that we're not moving them into a classroom that is a different setting.
No, yeah, it has to meet square footage, yeah. Fine. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Ten point one is an advancement for academic credits to plus, master's plus thirty. Ten point two is just an agreement with Millersville to allow field placements with us. Ten point three is the redesignation of Megan Everly from day-to-day to short-term professional. That's for a maternity leave. And ten point four is a job description. This was a position that we hired a while ago, and we called it a home monitor position. It has been valuable to the district. It's a classified position. However, we do have some concern about the word safety because that, that rings bells for PDE in terms of annual training, training to the point that this person doesn't need. So while the job description, we feel, is accurate, the title, we're looking at a couple of different options. So that may change, the title may change by next week. If we do, we can, we can certainly move that to discussion. What's in the job description, though, wouldn't change. But we don't want to trigger them to have to go to safety meetings that really they don't need to go to. Questions on those?
Can we maybe move that one for discussion? I'm trying to understand what their job functioning is and if it has to do with our mental health and bullying like that. That's what I'm getting from it.
So this came, I'll tell you how it initiated, how it started, and now it's, it's become a, it's become a lot more than that. But it started a couple of years ago. We had, right after COVID, we had quite a few issues in bathrooms and hallways. You know, kids, kids that were meeting up using cell phones and meeting up in bathrooms, and they were doing this slapboxing thing, and kids using phones. And so the position was created, she, she essentially, I mean, her position changes, but essentially she walks around our building. She might help with lunch duty, she might cover the receptionist area. She might, she might be just walking around the hallways, making sure that in between periods the kids are, you know, are not doing something, that there's not a group that's congregating in a bathroom or something like that, or looking at different door, helping with door coverage in terms of, in the mornings, making sure that kids that are coming in late, that we're getting them to where they need to be. There's a variety of different things that she helps over, helps out with over there. But they all tend to be along the lines of student behaviors and trying to bring a little more order to that, to the secondary building. I, a couple, well, a couple of weeks ago, I was talking to your wife in the hallway, and I actually took four pictures because I was in the middle of an intersection. It was during class, and I took a picture of each hallway. And there was no one, no, not one single kid in that hallway at the time I was standing there talking to his wife. That, if you had go back three years ago, that was just not the case. And so she's been quite a bit of help in terms of cleaning some of that up.
Is that during class?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she has not completely solved the during, the in-between class transition. No.
I happen to know that there was one student in the hallway, and it was my daughter. She was coming back from an appointment.
That is true.
Okay.
Not when I took the picture.
Yeah, when you took the picture. Okay, so we will move ten point four to discussion then for next week, thank you. Okay, I think that takes us through the agenda. Anything else, Dr. Messinger? Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay, hearing none, thank you all, this is good discussion, appreciate it. Again, we do better when we discuss things, and the board operates better. So really do appreciate that. If you do have any comments or questions prior to next Tuesday, please don't hesitate to let us know, and we can always forward those to the solicitor too on those policies. So, great. Okay, thanks, everyone, this meeting is adjourned.